Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to our meeting tonight. We will start off with prayer by Councilwoman Sylvia, and I will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone who is interested would like to join in prayer on the hands, please.
Thank you. First, give an honor to God. Father God, we thank you for this gathering today of city council and interested parties, interested citizens, Father God. Lord, we asking that you would have peace in our meeting this afternoon, Father God. Lord, we asking that you would give us wisdom and knowledge to do the things that we're supposed to do, to lead and guide the city in the right direction, Father God. Lord, and we thank you for all in attendance today, Father God. We thank you for all the citizens that will be coming up to speak, Father God. Lord, and we asking that you would bless, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I congratulate you, ladies and gentlemen, on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Seals.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Love yours.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Braddock.
Present.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
Yeah, all members present.
Okay. Once again, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our city council meeting. There's just enough housekeeping that we need to do. Council persons, please take your cell phones and your computers and slide them so, please. Audience, if I can get you to do the same thing, I would sure appreciate it. This is, this meeting is televised, thanks, on YouTube and on our Facebook page. So when individuals are called up and you have to, you're speaking, we need to be respectful at all times. This is a public meeting. Madam Clerk, do be having the announcements.
Yes, Mayor, we have a couple. City offices will be closed Thursday, July 4th, for Independence Day, and the next City Convenience Station Day will be July 12th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, where city residents may utilize the station to drop off bulky or miscellaneous items. That takes us to public input.
Okay. The public, the public comment is for us to adj, is for you to address city council with issues you may have. You will be called up to the podium. You have three minutes to speak. Within those three minutes, please, please state everything that you want to state. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Maddy Jones.
Does this turn on, or is it on already? Is it already on?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay. Good afternoon, city council.
Good afternoon.
The reason I'm here on April 2nd, I had a flood in my basement. I came home from church, and I smelled something, and I went down in the basement, started in the basement, and there was water up to my first step. Later on that day, the water kept rising, so I called city sewer for them to come out. They came out the next morning. They said that they didn't know why the water was rising, so they went out to look at the city sewer, the main sewer, and the gentleman said the sewer water was not moving, it was up to the street level. So he called the city. Gentleman from the city, Clayton Smith, came out, and he said that the city sewer was plugged up from my street all the way down to the one ways from Atwater to Remington and Hotlin. When I, when the water stopped coming in my house, it was three feet. I had three feet of sewer water in my house. Called my insurance company. They said since the water came from outside, it was considered a flood. So I went to City Hall and made a claim. I got a response from them saying, "It's not the city's fault." But the gentleman from the city came out and said it was the city's fault. So my question is, I have over $50,000 worth of damage in my basement. I had just bought, two years ago, three years ago, a brand-new furnace, water heater. I had just in 2023, 2022, bought a brand-new dryer, new washer, all of that's gone, plus I had all kinds of clothes, my pictures from my parents in Alabama that I can't get back. So I want to know if the city says, the street man says, it's the sewer man from the city, the street, said it's the city's fault, how come I get a letter from the city's attorney saying it's not the city's fault? So I'm out of all of this stuff in my basement, and nobody seems to care. So if it's not the city's fault, whose fault is it? It wasn't mine because I was at church when the water started to come in. When I came home, I passed out coming in the house. When I woke up, I fixed me some breakfast, and I start to smell something, and I said, "What on earth is that?" And then I went in the basement and was gonna step down, and I saw the water. So if it's not the city's fault, it's not mine. So whose fault is it?
You should be getting a response from someone again.
I have a letter from the city that says it was denied.
But you also came in front of council, and so we will be directing to get, to get to the bottom of it, to see what we can do, Ms. Jones.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Jack Taney.
For the record, it's Taney. Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, Manager Morales, my name is Jack Taney, 1369 Savoy Lane in Carlton Township, and I'm here tonight wearing my county commissioner hat. I wanted to say a few brief words about your new city attorney. Amy served the Saginaw County through law firm for several years until Manager Morales stole her away. And I just want to let you know, she did a tremendous job for Saginaw County. Up in the board office, they secretly call her the FOIA queen, by the way she answers those FOIA appeals in a timely and efficient manner. And I'm here tonight, I wanted to give her a Saginaw County goodie bag, and inside are items I stole from the board office. So, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Here, freeze.
Thank you.
And he did not steal them, so please don't nobody go back and say he stole anything. He literally borrowed them.
Mayor, our next speaker is Jamie Forbes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Protem, council members, city manager and staff. I'm Jamie Forbes. I'm Director of External Affairs at Stars. I am also the Vice Chair of the Saginaw County Consortium of Homeless Assistance Providers, and that is the context I'm here tonight. I'm here to give you a little information about what we do. So SECHAP was formed by HUD nearly 25 years ago, and around $2.8 million of funding comes into our community through the existence of this group on an annual basis. So who we are, SECHAP is a countywide collaborative made up of service providers, shelters, nonprofits, legal services, and government agencies, and people with lived experience. We're lucky to have some of the folks at this table come to our events, and we're thankful for that. Our members with lived experience are also compensated for their time, their knowledge, and their experience. What we do, we coordinate emergency shelter placements, we provide rental and utility assistance, we offer house, we offer housing case management, we collect clients to legal, behavioral health, and employment services, we support long-term stability through permanent housing placement, and we provide a network of stakeholder organizations that truly work together to make a positive impact on those experiencing homelessness. We operate a coordinated entry system, an organized process for anyone in Saginaw County experiencing or at risk of homelessness to access help fairly and efficiently. We, we impact the community individually and together. A few, a quick facts about SECHAP. SECHAP HUD funding provides long-term housing support, which includes rental subsidies and case management expertise for over 450 people a year. Most of these funds are targeted at those who have extensive history of homelessness combined with a disability. Our emergency shelters provide a total of 65,000 nights of shelter to men, women, and children in 2024. And due to collaborative efforts among the agencies within SECHAP, the average length of homelessness in Saginaw is 75 days. This is significantly less than the national average of 136 days. We are the frontline network for homelessness prevention and response in Saginaw County. We are delivering critical support with compassion and coordination. And now I'll hand it off to the next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy Carols Row.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members, Manager Morales and his staff. I am also here to talk about SECHAP and the work that we do. I work as the Director of Mustard Seed Shelter, and also currently serve as the Chair of the Saginaw County Consortium of Homeless Assistance Providers. So SECHAP is more than a service network, it is a true collaboration built on trust, shared goals, and commitment to solving complex problems together. We provide a unified response. No single organization we know can end homelessness. SECHAP brings together over 60 local partners, shelters, service providers, specialty treatment courts, law enforcement, government organizations, veterans group, healthcare providers, mental health, faith groups, and funders, to create a unified strategic response. Included on your table is a handout with a list of the organizations that have been involved in the past year. I am proud to work among true experts in the field. Our board meets monthly. In addition to, in addition to that, there are meetings going on on a weekly basis and quarterly meetings for all of the stakeholders. We are able to provide and solve cases in real time, coordinate services across agencies, track available resources, ensure that no one experiencing homelessness falls through the cracks. Each and every organization is firmly dedicated to this work, but we are stretched thin, and we aim to be as productive as possible with all the resources that are given to us, and we ensure that funds are used responsibly. We are very data-driven. We use, we use shared data systems to track needs and outcomes, helping us to prioritize those with the greatest vulnerability, and we are so thankful to the city's Human Planning Commission and all that, all city council members for contributing the funds needed for the homeless management information system, which tracks data across our community. We are always open and available to present this data to you at any point. We understand that there is a proposal to form a new committee around homelessness, and we are thankful for your passion for our neighbors facing this challenge. While we support increased community engagement, we do want to respectfully point out that this proposed committee could duplicate much of the work that SECHAP is already doing. We already provide information distribution, we provide public education. In fact, this week, we have a meeting scheduled with Phil Icke to do a series of social media stories featuring individuals that exemplify the challenges that our population experiencing homelessness face. We implement cross-agency problem-solving. We do recognize and share concern about the growing needs for street outreach, especially to unsheltered individuals, and for clear compassionate enforcement and ordinances related. Can I finish it? I have like two more sentences.
Just wrap it up.
Okay. We know that there's so much to learn from other communities, and we want to be part of moving forward with you and to gain knowledge from one another.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Erin Dunkle-Riley.
Good evening. I'm Erin Riley, and I'm the Coordinator for the Saginaw Consortium of Homeless, Saginaw County Consortium of Homeless Assistance Providers. I'm employed by the United Way of Saginaw County. I've been doing this work for nearly 25 years, and the collaboration and impact that I've seen in Saginaw is unlike anything I've seen. I've worked from Detroit to Flint to Aronette County, Bay County. This group is eager to support the elements of the proposal that was in tonight's agenda. And we're eager to support the elements that address the aspects of homelessness under the purview of the city. For the other elements of the proposal, we would welcome you to join us at the SECHAP table to move these ideas forward, where we can continue to address and accomplish the goals listed in the committee document. SECHAP is funded in a variety of ways. We receive federal funds from HUD, Emergency Solutions Grant, through MISTDA, and through the city of Saginaw, philanthropic grants, and in-kind supports from partner agencies and local businesses. These funds are used in a variety of ways. Emergency shelter operations, as was mentioned earlier, 65,000 nights of shelter were provided last year to men, women, and children in Saginaw. The cover, the funds cover case managers, housing navigators, rental and utility assistance, long-term housing programs such as rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing. In fact, the permanent supportive housing houses over 454 people, and it provides rental subsidies to those who need it the most. It covers a shelter diversion program, which is a brand-new program at United Way. Shelter diversion is a strategy that is fairly new to the housing field that helps people experiencing a housing crisis to quickly identify and access safe alternatives to shelter. Prevents people from having to go into shelter, but it also keeps beds open for those who have no other options. Funds are used for the annual point-in-time count, which many of you may have heard of or been involved in. Within the last 10 days of January, we pick a day, we have over 60 volunteers who go throughout the county and talk to people experiencing homelessness with the ultimate goal of trying to get them into shelter. We have coats and hats and blankets and carts and food and all sorts of things we give out that night as well. By working as a consortium, we reduce duplication, target funds, and ensure that clients receive the right help at the right time. Saginaw is facing rising housing costs, aging housing stock, and an increased need. Continued support from the city and the county is vital to sustain the system and to adapt as federal COVID funding sunsets. Your investment in SECHAP is an investment in public safety, community well-being, and the dignity of every Saginaw resident. We thank you for your continued partnership and support, and we would welcome you to join us in this important work.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Fellow council persons, you have three minutes as well. Tonight, we will begin with Councilwoman Hammond.
I wanted to thank everybody for coming out to tonight's meeting. We have a lot of our agenda, so I'll keep it short and just say thank you for coming to your city council meeting.
Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. I will keep it short. I'm just kidding.
She got a glasses on tonight.
I'm so happy. Anyway, I thank you all so very much, all of the speakers. I'd like to thank everyone for coming to your city council meeting this evening, and I was just thinking about something today. For every action, there is a reaction, and just take that however you'd like to take it. It's a lot, a lot of things have been going on in our city lately, and I'm sure a lot of you all are aware. So I would like, if you all would like to offer prayers, especially for our young people. A lot's going on, and we'd like to maybe offer more places for them to go, et cetera, offer our hand out possibly to parents, et cetera, because it's getting really different out here. I don't, I don't want to see, and I've had discussions, I don't want to see the city of Saginaw become or even be hurt, said that it's a sundown town or anything like that, or becoming to be one, anything like that, but a lot's going on. Only way you don't know it is if your head is in the sand. If you go anywhere, come back at night, go out of town, come back at night, you can see the chaos in the city late at night. I just came back in the city the other night, and I kid you not, our local police officers, the Michigan State Police, and you know how some people exaggerate, it was over 20 police cars on Washington the other night, you know, and we, you know, and things go hand in hand, you know, so you have to think about our young people, you have to think about our police officers, you know, it's, you know, it's a domino effect. It's, it's not good, you know, so we have to offer ourselves, and you know, I know Councilman Balls all the time talks about mentors, et cetera. It just has to be some changes, you know, and we talk about our young people leaving and coming back, they gotta want to have something to come back to, you know, it's just, we just have to offer prayers and then offer up solutions, you know. You can't just pray and then just think ideas are gonna just fall from the sky. We have to offer up solutions for our young people. Thank you very much. You all have a blessed day, and again, thank you for coming to your city council meeting. Let's do something.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia. I'm sorry, Seals.
Well, if I get another chance. I'll take that.
She only gets one chance. Councilwoman Seals, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to be back in the States. I've been out of the country, and seeing another land makes you appreciate home, and I missed home a lot, and I realize how beautiful other places are, but Saginaw is still my home, and Saginaw is the most definite beautiful place to live. And as I drove back into home, I realized that I love Saginaw. And when I got here, and as my sister sat next to me, Saginaw, when I drove in, I drove in the evening, got home at almost midnight, and it was, it was rambunctious at night, but yet and still, I was happy to be here, and I was, I'm not used to being out so late, but even at that time of night, it was, it was vibrant, and I was like, wow, so good to be home, and, and I wasn't afraid, I wasn't scared, I was just happy to be here. And so in thinking about that, I was thinking about everything I missed, just the meeting, I missed the last meeting, I missed so much the city council had done. I was like, what the heck have they been doing? And I was like, wow, they've been so busy since I've been gone, and so, but I missed the citywide meeting, I was like, wow, I missed that, so I can't wait to hear about that from, from June 11th, from the Beacon of Hope Church, about all the great stuff that's happening in our city, hearing about the Neighborhood Recognition Program, what's going on with that, the RAB program about that, all the good stuff that's happening with that. So I'm just excited to hear about the things that's been happening in Saginaw since I've been gone, so I'm just happy to be home, happy to see the things that's happening in our city, and so that's all I have to say today.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to, I hope and pray that our citizens can get some relief from what's going on in our city. I think the youth need to have something to do constructive, instead of just riding around and like they do during the freaknik or whatever. I don't think we gonna stop them from doing it because they, all of a sudden, the youth think they need to go and dance in the streets nowadays, so hopefully maybe we can wrap our arms around it and see some way they can do it in a constructive manner, if we can't stop it. Maddy Jones, I hope that your situation get earned out in a positive way, and I'd like to thank the SECHAP for all the work that they're doing in our community. I didn't know that all these organizations exist together like this, but it's good to see that they do. But some kind of way, we gotta let the people that need the services, we gotta get the information to them so that they can accept them and use them. I know that some people are due diagnosed with issues, may have an alcohol, drug problem, they maybe have the mental, mental, mental stuff going on all at the same time, and it's kind of hard to pull those people in, especially when alcohol and drugs play a large part of that, you know, and, and some people have gotten so, where they don't want to be ruled, you know, they just want to do what they want to do, especially when it come to using alcohol and drugs and stuff like that. So hopefully you guys can find some kind of way to get this information to our community so they can start accepting the services that you do have. It's good to know that Saginaw is still a caring place. Everybody comes and they volunteer their time to do things, to help out the city, and I think it's a wonderful thing, but some kind of way, we gotta get the services to the people that really need it. You know, been in the Big Brothers and Sisters program for so long and dealing with kids who don't have fathers at home for over 30 years, you know, it really does something to your heart to see that we study producing fatherless homes. So some kind of way, we gotta see if we can nip that in the bud, to keep these fathers to stay at home with their kids, or the mothers to stay home with their kids so that they can feel love at their houses. And, you know, I just want to thank you guys for doing what y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ostash.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome everybody tonight to the meeting and everybody watching from home. I too just want to thank SECHAP for coming out tonight. This is really informative. I was briefly reading a lot of it while I was sitting here tonight, listening to you, and that, and there's, actually, there's a lot, like 75% of your information has to deal with homeless encampments, and, and that is a real, it's a tough situation that happens within every municipality, so, so thank you for coming out and sharing this. I look forward to reading more about that. Councilwoman Seals, it's been really busy. I actually missed the resource fair. I had, I was at work, could not get away that day, but I did make the citywide meeting. There was a lot of good information updates, so thank you, staff, for putting that on, all the road construction. Travis Hare did a really nice job there, and the chief gave some updates as well. Actually, just a few things. It is really, really hot. You could probably cook lunch on the sidewalks, so just, but make sure that you're staying hydrated, but also what I want to say is make sure you're checking on your neighbors, especially those that live alone. They could be young or older, and your elderly folks, so just kind of make sure that you see some movement around the house. If things don't look right, check on them and just make sure everything is okay. Also, just a note to the council members that the city of Saginaw is a member of the Chamber of Congress for Saginaw. They do put on a percolator breakfast, which is every, the first Thursday of the month, that's at 7:30 in the morning. They, it's at the Horizon Center, and that also too, they do a lot of after-hour events, so it is good networking with businesses that are operating here and around our area. Just another announcement, we did a proclamation at the last meeting for Pride, Pride Month for the city of Saginaw, declaring it, but also Great Lakes Bay Pride will be holding their Pride event this weekend. That's gonna be at the Joel Event Center on Saturday from 11:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. And the last thing I want to say is, I just want to give an acknowledgement to Ellen Tobias, who is sitting here with us tonight. Ellen is a friend, but not only a friend, he is also part of the Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association as their treasurer. He's very active in their neighborhood, responsible for decorating the boulevard with birdhouses and Easter eggs and every holiday that comes through, but also, and Ellen has been doing some work here at the Anderson Enrichment Center on his own, volunteering. He's been trimming all the wisteria, doing some sprucing up behind us here that you can see, so thank you, Ellen, for doing that, and he did ask me to challenge people to come out to Jazz in the Garden, which is every Wednesday beginning July 9th. So thanks, Ellen, for doing that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Wow. Wow, Ellen. Next, we have Councilman Brother.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone, just welcome to your city council meeting. I don't have a whole lot to say. I was out of town, to our family reunion, had a good time there, but I would just like to say though, with, with our city, with all the, you know, all the efforts that everyone is doing in our city, you know, you know, I appreciate it. I think it's important that we educate ourselves and our city and our community of the different entities that are going on, and so we can be creative and collaborate, and I believe that our collaboration efforts are, you know, is, you know, it's not the greatest at, at some times, but I think that we need to get more. not the greatest at, at some times, but I think that we need to get more educated and understand what other entities that's out there that's doing the work in our community. Um, we have a lot of different challenges, far as if it was homelessness, our parks and recreation, our, uh, violence in our city, um, affordable housing, so we have all these different challenges, and I think that if we, we, we bring our heads together, I think we have a smart group up here at this table, and I think that if we take the time and, um, take our time, and, and really be creative and really look at the things, and we can get these collaboration efforts throughout all these organizations, you know, to be on the same page when it comes to helping our people and helping the people and, and solving our solutions in our community, and so I'm looking forward to, you know, hopefully this summer, you know, more collaboration throughout the organizations, you know, there's no one greater than the other one, there's a need, so let's try to meet those needs in our city together and be more effective, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, next we have Ms. Wicket.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, uh, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, um, again, I want to echo, uh, my appreciation for C chap and all of the work that you do, um, I love the holistic approach that you have, um, I love that you're gonna be working with Phil and telling the stories, you know, it's, it's, I think a lot of the, the people that don't use your services are the ones that say, there's nothing, there's nothing out there, so the more that we can market what you do and let people know, I think, um, I think that's a great and beautiful thing, so, um, I'm actually, you know, if I could get with you and, and, Amy, if I could talk to you about the mustard, uh, C shelter, you know, I kinda follow you on social media, but I'd like to know a, a lot more about that, um, again, I like the holistic approach that you have, and it's, it's needed, it's very much needed, so I thank you for what you're doing. Um, again, mentioning our youth, uh, as well as the police officers, uh, for being, you know, in, in this community and doing the work that you all do, uh, to keep everyone safe, uh, the youth do need, uh, a better constructive method of expressing themselves, 'cause youth, they're very creative and it's gonna come out, so if we can work together and figure out, we can have a, I don't know, dance contest or something, something in the community that's structured and, and positive, and along with working with mentor programs that we do have out there, um, we need it all. Um, I did attend this, the citywide meeting, I loved the information that was there, I wish more of our citizens were there, um, it should be in a big place, because there's a lot of information that's given, and questions can be answered, so I encourage you to go to the next one. Um, this weekend I also was a part of the Juneteenth, um, parade, so that was a good time, I just got asked literally at nine thirty in the morning, to be a part of it, so I got to do that, it was hot, but it was, it was lovely, and the, um, the event after at Morley Park was also cool, um, I would also like to get more involved in that just for next year, because I think it can be, um, a, a great event for Michigan, so, we, it, it'd be awesome. Um, I think that's all, oh, except for, you know, I want the people of our, of our city, this beautiful city of ours, continue to look for the remnant, there are people out there that are doing the work, boots on the ground, trying to change, and if we can all come together and get that information collectively out, um, so that we can be more effective like Councilman Radick said, uh, we have the tools here to make this place beautiful for everybody, we just have to do the work, thank you.
Thank you, next we have Mayor Pro Tim Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community, just wanna thank, um, our speakers for coming out and talking and for the, uh, S chap information, was very helpful, um, I think this would've been helpful a little bit sooner, 'cause we did get a lot of backlash on Facebook regarding the post encampment, and, um, I've been a social worker in the field for a while, so this was fairly new to me, so I'm gonna review it more, and I like to be prepared, um, and do my own research at times, but I wasn't aware this is available, so this is awesome, um, I do see the homelessness, um, first foremost, when I go to the Eastside Soup Kitchen and stuff, and see a lot of it there, and you know, it, they close at a certain time, and so, um, but there's great that there's you guys doing the boots on the ground and being there for them, so, um, hopefully maybe I could come in and sit in on a meeting, I'm very interested in that, I would love to attend one and see, um, how they go, and then also just, um, keep my friends, um, family in your prayers, her body was the one that was recovered, um, this evening at the Ojibwe, um, so I was out of town, got that news, so it's always hard, um, a lot of young people passing away, um, whether it's shootings or suicide, um, people are going through a lot of things that we're not aware of, so like they said, just check on your neighbors, your loved ones, um, just reach out, sometimes you just don't know what people are going through, um, it's just sad situation, and, um, prayers for comfort for that, but it's always sad when you're out of town and you come back home and you have to, you know, hear the news of something that happened here and, you know, wishing that you could've been here, but, um, yeah, so I just wanna thank everybody for coming out, and don't have too much to say, um, but just Fourth of July's coming up, and let's just keep it safe, um, I know it's a big time down here in the city of Saginaw, the Court Street Bridge is back open, looking forward to raising the flag, and Tobias, I'll give you my address, so you can come do my yard, um, but yeah, it always looks good down on Court Street, 'cause I don't live too far, so I'm always curious who was doing all that work, but thank you for that, 'cause it looks so lovely, and when my grandson goes down there, he enjoys it, so there's a lot of people that really mean to do well in the community, I know there's people out there right now that are handing out water after hours, juices, whatever, that are doing it out of their own pocket or donation, and so, I think everybody's heart is in a good place, we just gotta keep working together and collaborating, 'cause it can be done, um, you know, Saginaw's an awesome place to be, I don't care what negative, it's gonna be everywhere, but Saginaw's my home, this is where I love to be, and we just gotta be safe and look out for one another, and that's all I gotta say, thank you.
Okay. Hey, I'm the last one, so it's always a repeat, I'm always repeating, but I need to, for my ladies and the group, 'cause there are gentlemen in this seat, in this SC cap, I know the work that you do, a lot of us, we gotta do our homework, if we begin to do our homework, we'll find out there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that people don't even know about, a good example was, I didn't know it until two days ago, you, you literally have people riding around, giving out water and lemonade and juice, and they're taking it out of their pockets, I know for me, we, we be a holding playground, Michael, we on our old stomping grounds, and we make, we try to make sure that the kids have stuff to eat, a lot of things were cut this summer, so food is not readily available like everybody thinks for these kids, they only have so many slots that they can fill, I am encouraging everybody in this room, do a wellness check on your neighbor, do a wellness check, if you don't see them moving around, just go knock on the door, I had opportunity of being at the June tee in a hundred degree weather, uh, this weather is not anything nice right now, so I'm encouraging everybody to drink plenty of water, plenty of water, Gatorade, lemonade, you gotta stay hydrated, 'cause once you get dehydrated, it's gonna take a minute to pull back, again, it's a new season, it is a new day, fresh anointing has already come to the city of Saginaw, now we just, we have to, as a people, we've gotta stop letting negatrons control the script, I talked about collaboration, I don't know how long I've been talking about collaboration, same thing with council persons, I've been saying for the longest, buy something constructive to do, get involved, we all have to get involved, and the only way we gonna do it is, is to take our guys, put our guys down, and let's work together, Madam Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so I know we, um, do have a, a long agenda today, and, um, a pretty big budget adjustment on the agenda, so those of you who haven't gone through it before, the reason is because our, um, fiscal year starts next week, so most of these are blanket purchase orders, something we do every year, and it's one of our final budget adjustments for the year, so, and that, we also have Nancy Ole here to give, um, the report on our strategic planning session, so I know we wanna get to that, I just wanted to, um, mention a few items that are coming up, uh, our next citywide meeting, we are having an extra one, um, and it's going to be Wednesday, July ninth at five thirty, we're going to have that at the Saginaw Community Action Center, twenty-eight, twenty-four Perkin Street, and we'll be hearing updates from the ARPA sub recipients, at that meeting, we're splitting them into two groups, so, um, that is our extra meeting, then August it will be the remainder of the sub recipients reporting. I do want, also thank city staff for coordinating and planning the Community Resource Fair, um, the only negative thing is it always is super hot, and it kind of kicks off a week of heat, but, um, Cassie did a lot of work on that, so, and the inspector's division, so I wanna thank them for that, um, we, I'm also on the Saginaw County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and I do wanna mention this, because it, um, is a project that came to the County Redevelopment Authority at our meeting last week, so the last meeting, you all approved the, um, development agreement for the Behringer Building, so that's, uh, development, uh, group that we haven't worked with before, um, Brownfield Redevelopment, at, at the County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, um, we heard of a, um, proposed, uh, Brownfield project at East Genesee and South Water Street, if you remember, that's the location of the, um, garage, parking garage and warehouse that was demolished, um, that had bricks spina street, and then it was a hole in the ground for quite some time, um, there's a proposed project for that site, so that's exciting, be, um, great to get that redeveloped and something new there on the riverfront, and I think you'll hear more about that, um, as they move forward with that, and, and finally, just a reminder that our, um, if you wanna go to, uh, DDA meeting, Planning Commission, zoning, those are going to be at the Morley Building, at, at, uh, one Tuscola Avenue, most of our committee and commission meetings will be there, um, for the duration of the City Hall project, so, just a reminder, um, and that building, we're working with them to make sure we coordinate that the building's open on time and, and, uh, is available for everyone. So, um, Nancy, you all know Nancy from our strategic planning session, and, uh, she's, uh, been working on the final report, so she has a presentation this evening for us, so I'll hand it off to her.
Okay, and Vicki is going to be toggling through this, so, um, we talked originally, um, in your report about the process that was used, and just for those of you in the audience, we've been hearing the word collaboration a lot this evening, and that process was a, a marriage between elected and city officials, Saginaw future, the Chamber of Commerce, the public at large, it was really a, a lovely approach in the beginning, and then to send a survey out to the public and get the response rate that we received, um, it was a blessing and also a challenge, because of course, when we go out to the public, um, we get all sorts of responses, some that are, um, in tandem with each other, and some diametrically opposed, um, but, I am, I encourage all of you to go back to those survey responses, because there are some real gems in terms of the comments from the public, so you will hear themes, uh, this evening, but there are some just outlier type responses that are really very creative in terms of what you might do, um, from the community, and so, um, very, very encouraged by what we received there. Vicki, let's take a look at the mission, uh, what we agreed upon in that meeting was that the city of Saginaw is committed to providing high quality services to ensure both an in- an inclusive, a safe and vibrant community in which to live, work, learn, and play, and one of the things that we heard in the meeting is that the educational system in the city of Saginaw is one of the things that can attract people to this community, so it is not by accident that living, working, learning, and playing are all included in the city's mission. Let's take a look at the vision, the vision for your community, and by the way, for those of you in the public, the vision is not an infinite vision, it is a vision over the next three years, and this is what we are looking to achieve, so the city of Saginaw with a focus on collaboration will be a welcoming community that promotes healthy living, individual and neighborhood growth, stimulates business development and innovation, and fosters entertainment and educational opportunities for all, okay, there's a lot of work built into that vision statement. Let's talk about our principles, the city of Saginaw's core values communicate how you will work to serve your community, and when we talk about these principles, we are not only talking about elected, and, but we are talking about all employees with the city of Saginaw, and so we are expecting these values to hold fast, no matter whom is affiliated with the city, and by the way, just a little by the way, okay, since I work a lot with the Michigan Municipal League, um, I have also worked with cities that actually hold their public to these standards, they publicize them, and they say, if we are going to be neighborly, and I heard you talking about neighboring, um, in your opening comments tonight, you didn't, didn't necessarily use that word, but that was the intent, that we would actually hold our neighbors to these standards as well, so the first one is on diversity and inclusiveness, we appreciate and value the uniqueness of each individual, we treat everyone with respect and dignity. Secondly, service accountability and responsiveness, we put our citizens first by establishing measurable performance goals, recognizing achievements, and responding to needs. And third, uh, in the interest of unity, collaboration, and teamwork, we form effective partnerships that maximize resources and deliver high quality services across the community, and so, in that interest, when we look at the public comments tonight, and some of the associations and organizations that are so vibrant in the community, in the spirit of collaboration, you'll be talking to one another. Let's continue. Now, we had five key areas that we looked at when we were doing strategic planning, and the first one was economic development of the city's urban core, and we looked at needs and opportunities in that initial meeting, the end of January, and so, you see a variety of issues and opportunities that were identified, what the team did that day was take those identified needs and then prioritize those needs, and also talk about your current performance when it comes to those needs. Coming to the top of those issues and opportunities in terms of priorities were tax cap lifting and supporting community assets. Now, a third one that you see there, um, and it was prioritor- prioritized is number nine, was housing and affordable, um, affordable housing and missing the housing in the middle. Um, what you will see is that that one actually rose even higher in terms of goals when we looked at our third issue, which was neighborhood revitalization, so we will get back to that one in a little bit. Okay, let's talk about the goals, okay, the goals based on key priorities for economic development of the urban core, and these were identified in our initial meeting in January, um, the first one was around the first priority of goal for supporting community assets, and that is to secure a viable Brownfield redevelopment plan that provides two hundred thousand dollars with revolving loans within eighteen months to two years, and to replenish those funds for future loans. So, Tim, it's very, the timing is beautiful, hearing about what's going on with Brownfield development. The second is a goal for property tax cap, and that is support the bill in the legislature with the end result of that bill passing. Let's continue. The themes from the public as it comes to this, we're not going to hit, actually, what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you a moment to look at these themes, not to read them verbatim. But as you take a look at those themes, you're going to see that there is some diversity of thought and opinion when it comes to the public regarding these goals. We received many, many comments. What we included was simply those themes where we heard multiple people responding to these. And actually, we see that some are diametrically opposed when it comes to these themes. So, you had a significant number of people saying, "Eliminate the tax cap." You had a significant number of people saying, "Keep the tax cap," and a variety of responses in between. So, take a moment to look through those. And remember, we were looking at economic development of your urban core. I love that last one, making healthy food and transit available to citizens, because it was so in keeping with your mission, which also speaks about having a healthy community. Let's take a look at the recommendations around this. If comments around, you saw in terms of the themes there, we heard some themes around trust. And so, if comments around lack of trust around expenditures are indeed widespread, and we don't know that, we heard that expressed by people in terms of the survey, but we don't really know how widespread that is. But of course, you're going to be looking out into the community to find out if that, in fact, is the case. But if that is the case, we recommend doing a city administration and elected officials working session in preparation for educating citizens on the gradual impact of the tax cap. Because we have citizens out there who think that if you remove that tax cap, all of a sudden, the City of Saginaw is going to have millions and millions and millions of dollars available. And in fact, that's not the case. And so, we need to level set with the public what the expectations would be with that. So, that training, we'd all like to be on the same page, elected and city employees and administration. So, the desired outcome of training is to level set those expectations with the public when it comes to expenditures, since amending that tax cap will not result in dollars for huge initiatives to take place in the community. And then, another thing that we should do is have talking points that should be drafted in conjunction with that working session on what the tax cap will and will not do. And that way, we're all speaking, coming from the same page. The public is hearing a unified message, and we, you'll hear the term "reality check" later, too. We'll have a reality check on what removal of that tax cap would do. Let's move on. The next element of the five was around priorities for public safety and fire. And again, we had five key issues that were identified. And out of those key issues, what really rose to the top in terms of priorities was recruitment and retention for police and fire. And secondly, engagement with the community. Both of those items were really reinforced with the public when we ran the survey. I just want to make one little comment, Vicki, before you move on, though. On that lack of funds and resources, what the police and fire department have really heard from the public is that even though you are challenged in terms of your funds and resources, the public has been very, very pleased with what you have done with those limited funds and resources. So, you know, the most bang for the buck is what we are hearing. But would we love more? Absolutely. Let's move on. The resulting goals based on the key priorities for public and safe, for public safety and fire, we initially said we want to increase recruiting efforts to gain more applications for those positions. And then you see something that is crossed out there. And what we originally, our conclusion originally in January was that within three years, we wanted 10% of the city's workforce to be city residents. What's interesting about that is that even internally, we did not realize how many residents of the City of Saginaw actually do work for the city. So, after that meeting, we went back and did some homework with HR and discovered that 19% of the employees of the City of Saginaw are already residents of the city. So, we went back and did a little work from there and said, "Since we've confirmed that 19% figure, we'd like to amend that goal to be within three years, the city will implement a new incentive plan with the goal of increasing city residents in the city workplace." So, we've already almost doubled what our initial thought was before we were fully informed what the numbers were, but of course, there's more work to do. In addition to that, the action plan is that city administration will actually be working to come up with an attraction plan and an incentive plan to bring more people from the city into the fold. And then, we also want to sponsor our Saginaw Public Schools students through the High School Fire Academy during the next school year. Got a lot of positive feedback about what that's doing through the schools. And so, absolutely, we want to continue those efforts. Let's move on. In terms of the goals for engagement with the community, we want a 5% increase year over year of the number of individuals reached by fire prevention activities. We got a lot of feedback about what you are doing and the benefit to the community. And of course, we want to reduce the crime rate. We want to do that by 10% per year through proactive policing initiatives. And again, what the public is hoping and what the city is hoping with this strategic plan is that not only are you responding, but that you are preventing. Let's move on. So, I'll give you a moment again to read through the themes from the public survey regarding these goals. And I am hopeful that many of you in this room were participants in that survey and giving us that feedback. And we have even more. So, Vicki, if you can go to the next page, because we got quite a bit of feedback on police and fire. And so, you can even see with police, you're getting some mixed messages there. Some of the public wanting you to focus on violent crime. Many of the public also wanting you to focus on small crime. So, our recommendations from there, let's move on, is that as recruitment and retention efforts are your number one goal, building on what you are currently doing in schools should be continued and have support from those who responded to your survey. Secondly, we had a citizen who noted that your Michigan State Police funding is uncertain and has a great talking point about the need for additional funding. The city needs to consider this, but without being alarmist in the messaging out to the public while addressing the need for additional personnel in police and fire. So, the messaging is going to be important there even while you address those issues. And as we say, it is uncertain at this point in time. And if there is reduced funding for collaboration among police agencies, we would recommend that you consider additional investment in technology for public safety. Alrighty. Let's move on to our third area, which was arts, culture and recreation. And as you look at the issues and opportunities that are identified there, on the priority votes, building upon assets already happening, whether that be Hoyt Park, where we are today, the Japanese Tea House, downtown Lawn Chair Film Fest and others, those were the number one priority for arts, culture and recreation. And so, given that, as we take a look at the goals for neighbor, excuse me, for arts, culture and recreation, the goals for building upon assets, a walkable community, improving pedestrian access on Washington Avenue corridor from the Dow Event Center to the zoo within the next five years. Within one year, improve the Central Park District to increase use with an annual capital investment of $100,000, with planned recreational activities, partnerships with county parks and businesses and nonprofits, and facilitate adoption of parks, so that as we talk about being able to maintain your current parks and having limited funding, if we've got that adoption of parks, we can collaborate within our community and also maintain them that way as well. Let's move on. Give you a moment to look at the themes. And we have more on the next slide. And again, just as with survey responses on police and fire, we had tremendous response from the public when it did come to arts, culture and recreation. So, in terms of recommendation, what we would hope to see is you connecting neighborhood associations with organizations that plan arts, music and cultural and recreational events, to support some of the smaller events in your neighborhoods and parks around the city, and do so with minimal funds needed to support. What we heard from the public as well as from you is that we've got a lot of opportunity just cropping up within neighborhoods, but not necessarily having the knowledge on how to plan that and make it happen. And so, if we can make those connections with organizations that do that planning, we should be able to see more things happening at the neighborhood level. Let's take a look at our fourth area, and that is neighborhood revitalization. And so, our key priorities with the neighborhood revitalization, you see the two that were really strong there were the quality of available housing as well as affordable quality housing development. And so, that's where we centered our efforts in terms of goals. So, if you can go to the next slide. Goals for neighborhood revitalization. Our first one is goal for quality of available housing and affordable quality housing development. And council, what you will see on this is that we have had some modification, because at the time we did this, we weren't really talking about collaboration with the county. And so, as we have gotten more information, we have suggested that after May of 2025, which is now, that the countywide initiated housing study was conducted. They're still, you know, assessing that. We suggest that you work with other local units to collaborate on how to meet the identified needs in conjunction with that survey, with an emphasis on new housing in the city. In addition, on your goal for affordable housing, we also think that you should be collaborating with the county on the information that was garnered. And so, that by the end of 2025, participate in the countywide initiated housing study to discuss affordable housing and start building those relationships. Let's continue. We've got some themes from the public regarding those goals. And again, we've got a lot of feedback from them, so take a moment to read through these, and then we'll go on to the next page, because we have even more. You're going to see in comments that not only was the public suggesting that we address affordable housing, but that we address moderate and middle-income housing. There was a lot of feedback that said if we're going to attract new people into the City of Saginaw, especially young people, that we want to take a look at the middle housing as well. And let's go on to that next slide for even more. City residents really want to hold landlords accountable, especially those out of the city, some of your absentee landlords. And if you look at the middle of that, you will also see when we go back to having the mission of having a healthy community, you know, food deserts. The community has responded to that and said, "We need more grocery stores. We need health care. We need those things critical to health in the community." Let's move on. The city has already been doing a wonderful job in terms of some of the services that you provided under grants. Looks like residents want to see those continued. And so, coming out of all of those themes, let's take a look at our recommendation. let's take a look at our recommendation. First off, clarify that respondents focused on mid-level housing, more so than affordable, attainable housing. So with that thought in mind, we would suggest that you set a goal of connecting first-time homebuyers to available resources such as MISTDA, and we heard additional resources tonight, or the use of federal tax credits to help first-time homebuyers. So getting that education to the public about resources. Secondly, council may want to set a goal of partnering with your school system to publicize Saginaw's school system and student success in order to attract even more citizens to reside in the city. We had a lot of discussion on that in January, and it was anchored by the responses from your citizens. And thirdly, when the county completes its housing study, refer back to those recommendations plus additional recommendations found in the survey as a starting point for community discussion plus an opportunity for the community to know that you have indeed heard their voices. And then, our final is on utilities and infrastructure. And in terms of priorities, oh, we've got priorities for utilities and infrastructure? In terms of those priorities, and I've got to get a little bit closer. Yeah, nobody's eye is so big. But number 10 was to build the city with utilities already here. And the context of that comment at our January meeting was this thought that with HSC expansion and corning, that we need better communication and maybe more utilities focused and bring those places into the city. And the reality is that those decisions have already been made. And when you start taking a look at where HSC is located in Hemlock, they are not going to be bringing that new facilities into the city. The cost of doing that, the transportation cost, even thinking about the heavy trucks that would be coming into this area and putting that load on your city streets, that simply is not going to be happening. And so we just need to educate the public that, you know, as the public says, oh, we'd love to have those right here within the city in terms of the cost effectiveness realistically, that's not going to happen. So that's why we refer to the perception versus reality checks. And then we had the other priorities were on capital needs, not meeting those, local roads, minimum funding, and actually the new village that was passed in August of 2024. The city is just receiving those funds this year. So good news on that side. And then walkability was actually addressed when it came to neighborhood revitalization. So those were the key priorities there. Let's moving on. The goals for utilities and infrastructure. In terms of the capital needs, that you will spend 5% of available cash balance on expected capital purchases to be made within three years and to be in compliance with the city's rate study. In addition, apply for a minimum of five grants and two appropriations each year to leverage available funds for capital purchases. And again, when you saw everything that was being done in the city in terms of furnaces and repairs there, you couldn't do that without federal funds. So you definitely want to be pursuing those grants and appropriations. And then a goal for local roads is to repair or replace three miles of local streets each year for five years. Let's continue. In terms of a goal for countywide collaboration, schedule quarterly meetings with the county and city infrastructure staff. And some action steps are to establish city and county representatives, I can't speak, representatives, and move locations to show collaboration throughout the county. And then finally, on your goals for building in the city, package incentives to attract new development and hopefully five sites per year and continuously work to prepare sites for development. So when you're taking a look at brownfield development, that's wrapping into it as well. Let's continue. You've got your themes from the public regarding goals. Take a moment to look through those. Certainly are hearing from the public that we need to slow down on Washington, right? And then let's look at our recommendation. Oh, sorry, I jumped again. And you can see that trust issue coming up again, which is why, again, having some of those talking points back into the community so people are fully informed is a great approach. Now we can get to the recommendations. So a lot of the comments that you heard from that survey on infrastructure were very consistent with the comments that you got on economic development of your urban core. So while the goals for infrastructure and utilities suggest collaboration with the county, my suggestion is that the conversations you have with the community, and we had talked about, you know, the small group neighborhood meetings, having more conversation, getting to service groups. Once you are fully informed so that we're on the same page and all giving the accurate information to the community, suggests that we spend quite a bit of time with the community sharing that information. And when you start taking a look at utilities and infrastructure, usually you're looking at the big issues. But we heard a lot from the public that sidewalks and bike lanes are an issue for them as much as we heard about major thoroughfares. So we're going to have to give that attention as well. So finally, wrapping it up, let's take a look at your next steps. On next steps, we want council and department heads to read through the survey results for the detail because you will see multiple suggestions coming from individuals in the public that just have some amazing insight. And you're going to not just want to look at the themes, but you're going to want to look at those individual comments and see where those can contribute both to the current goals as well as future goal setting. In addition, city administration, we would like them providing additional feedback and information regarding prioritization of amending any goals out there given further research. So when we did talk about going back and finding out, ah, goal for 10% city residents, well, you did that and you doubled it because we didn't have the information. So city administration is going to do some digging there to provide you with that information. Department heads, you will be meeting with your staffs to determine action plans to meet council-approved goals. We can have all the goals in the world, but if we are not setting action plans on how to realize those goals, they're not going to happen. If adjustments need to be made, those will be submitted to your city manager. Manager will meet with department heads for any clarification of that, any edits that you're going to do, and then he will be submitting those adjustments to council. We have some additional steps. Department heads, we would like to see department heads rotating individually through council meetings for brief updates on goal achievement and attainment. One of you had mentioned in your comments about being positive and talking about the positive that's happening in the community. We can beat ourselves up if we don't realize that we're making progress. And that is the message that should be going out into the community. What are we doing out there and how is it benefiting the community? And so department heads, we would like in. And of course, your meetings are televised. And so that goes beyond the public here in terms of the messaging on the accomplishments that we're achieving. City manager and/or your fiscal services or O&amp;B director, back on the accountability side because that's one of your values, we would like you to assign line items to goals and action plans for tracking to the budget. I mean, we always track the capital plans on the budget, but not always the smaller issues. So we would like that tracked to the budget, preferably at the beginning of the fiscal year. It'd be natural to do that for the big capital projects, but we want those initiatives tracked as well. And then finally, as goals are accomplished, communicate their accomplishment to the public beyond your council meetings. So we need you all being cheerleaders out into the community about what we're planning to do, what the successes are out there, and also how we can get the public engaged as well because many of the things that you saw here this evening refer right back to collaboration with the public. So when we take a look at the end of the fiscal year, what are you doing? Dedicating a portion of council meetings to celebrate your successes. Once your higher priority goals are met, council and the city manager and department heads will look at the additional goals that you identified in that January meeting. And by the way, if you've had some easy wins, you may have had some priority needs or opportunities out there that only got two votes in terms of priorities. But if it's an easy win and doesn't take a tremendous amount of resources, you may be able to address those quickly, communicate those out to the public and get some momentum along with them. You will be measuring all of those things with SMART goals, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant to your mission, trackable, and you'll measure those against the mission and vision. City's mission and vision statements, I suggest that those always be included on all of your agendas because it keeps you focused. Especially as we have new council members come on, knowing what the mission and vision is, so everything is driving toward those is so important. And Mayor, if you want to have them read those aloud or put them visually at the beginning of each meeting, I encourage you to do so so that as you move into your decision-making, all of you can say, does this really help us achieve our vision? And is it in keeping with the mission that we committed to? Because you may have some great ideas out there that may be 10 years out for the next vision, but are not timely now. Alright.
Now, Ms. Nancy, come back up. Do we have any questions for council?
You're not done, yes?
You're not done. Come on up, sweetie.
Get back to that mic.
Yeah. So the recommendations and the process of coming up with recommendations on the second to last page, we're talking about, I just want to be clear on next steps. There was a lot said. So in terms of when we are getting down to the council-approved goals, is this going to come back to council for a vote to approve the goals? Because I haven't had a chance to look at the raw survey data. I don't think that we've been provided with that yet.
Oh, council has not received the survey yet?
What is it going to do in the report?
Oh, okay. But, yes. So, Tim, will that be made available to them, the survey in its entirety?
I think Vicki said it's included in the report.
Okay.
So I assume that's been sent out.
Okay.
That's been sent out?
Comments, yes.
So we'll make sure, if you don't have it, we'll make sure you get it. And then we would bring those back to council for approval.
And then, yes, it will be coming back to a vote.
Okay. Do we know when that will be?
I do not.
Yeah, I guess it depends on how we want to handle it because I think initially in meetings with Nancy, we're talking about approving the goals and then having the departments look at them and then coming back with adjustments. It may be preferable, council would rather have us bring back those adjusted goals instead of going through that twice so that you have time to read all the comments and then department heads can go through that with their staff. Given, I mean, we don't have a timeline established, but we'll start looking at that. Given this is, you know, in addition to the day-to-day activities, I'd make sure you provide the departments enough time to go through everything. But it shouldn't be too long. As I look at a lot of these things and part of what, when I was going over this presentation with Nancy, I think she could tell you a lot of my comments are, oh, well, we're doing that already or we're starting to do that. So a lot of what we talked about is those communication projects and getting out these things into the public. And that's where you see the getting department heads rotating through council meetings and giving those updates. Maybe bringing back some things we used to do pre-COVID, which were smaller group meetings with council too. I don't know, I know some of you probably remember those who were on council before that. But we used to do that a little bit more before, so we can bring all those things back.
Yeah, and if I can just add a comment on to that. If any of you are at all concerned saying, oh, are we setting goals for things that were already started on? Maintaining the good work is a goal that you're going to want to continue doing. I often work with organizations in cities that only focus on the new initiatives and take resources away from what they're already doing well. And then some of those things fall apart. So I'm glad to hear on the maintaining of what you're currently doing. Yes?
Now, thank you so very much for your presentation. Not a question, but just a comment as I looked over and viewed the information. I guess Phil has his job cut out for him.
You feel what?
No, I'm sorry. In-house joke. Phil has his job cut out for him. It's so much, it is coming up under his department a lot. A lot of things are actually already being done in that area too. A lot of them are already being tackled, so kudos. You don't feel sorry for him?
And just on the utility side, if it weren't for one of your public works people, I would not have made it here tonight because Waze was not taking me to the Anderson and Richmond Center with the construction. So thumbs up for the service they are doing for people wandering the streets.
Any other questions?
Yep, just real quick. So this was actually a fantastic presentation. What I was getting, I was hearing the same thing over and over. And you said, there's a lot here to digest. And so when you look at it to score, to see how far we are, it's almost like a project plan we've got to put together. So I know like with the master plan too, we did something where we actually identified everything, how far we're moving, how, you know, it was all numbered. So I'm hoping that we kind of do something like that. But the other thing that I also heard tonight too is the communication piece of this. Getting it out to the public, that is extremely difficult. As an example, we could have a town hall, but would they? As an example, we could have a town hall, but would they come to the town hall? Because do they even know that we're doing it? So, part of this has to be like, we as a council, too, like have to think about, how do we, because social media is not always the platform. Not everybody lives there. So, we got to figure out how we can get everybody from all ages to come in to participate. Hello to the people that are 30 to 40, 40 to 50, you know, because we see less participation of our, and I see it even at neighborhood meetings. You see people that are maybe few 40s, some 50 to 60, some 60 to 70, but where are the 30-year-olds? And these are the ones that are giving us the most ideas of what they want to see. So, it's going to be a real challenge, but I think we can do it. We can pull it off.
Oh, I think you can do it, too.
We can.
That's why we made the recommendation, though, that you have the education.
Exactly.
Meeting together first and develop talking points out of that.
Yep.
But I agree, getting out into the community is key. And so, being with nonprofits, being into the, showing up at a PTO meeting and talking to parents, giving information through your local library where the parents of preschoolers are coming for programs with their children.
And the communication piece of the education piece you talked about, too, is that this is a job that we all do and city staff does. It's just like I do IT. I'm sure you don't know how to code, but I have to explain it to you. This is exactly what we need to do here as a city. And so, I have actually been going after people that will make a comment that is not so factual on social media, but I've actually taken the time to explain it to them. And then, once I explain it to them, then they're like, "Oh, I get it." And if you said, once you explain them how the job is done, then they understand how a municipality works. Because just because you live in the city, not necessarily do you understand how everything is put together, and that's our job.
Oh, absolutely. And encouraging your government teachers with the school to have their students show up to a council meeting. I mean, there are a lot of creative ideas that you can do to get the word out.
Yeah, thank you. And like I said again, it's, I'm looking forward to this.
Council on.
Just real quick, the work can get out, and it can be out to the masses. You have to get the trust, and that's a really, really, really big issue, is to gain that trust of the citizens again, because I don't want to keep it going, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And thank you, and I really appreciate all the work. Just to dig down on process, because some of my things that I noticed were that some areas and some recommendation and some goals were very numbers-specific and some were not. And I think that, personally, I think that we can bring some of those numbers-goals specifically when it comes to the need for housing and when responding to the community's interest in holding landlords accountable. For instance, our, you know, certain inspections that we used to do regularly, we just can't keep up with because we don't have the staff. So, what would that look like? What would it take? What are the numbers behind that algorithm? And as we get into the housing discussion, as you said, we are not at the same place we were. The housing submission has been completed, but now we have numerical goals. To incorporate those numerical goals would be something that I would really like to see done, so that's why I asked a question about process, is now that things are moving along and we're getting more data, we can look at the raw survey data that came back from the community and kind of determine, have some of these things moved along? Where can we really specifically get in with goals and talk about, you know, what is the information we need to make these determinations of what's realistic and what's not realistic? Reality check, as you said.
Absolutely. And not only will you do that, but we made a conscious choice to not insert numerical goals where they weren't agreed upon in our January 31st meeting, because we didn't want to take the work that you had done and change it without your permission. So, that certainly, we can incorporate that into the next steps.
I don't remember in January us talking about $200,000 specifically for the Brownfield redevelopment revolving loan fund. Did we talk about that? I don't remember.
Whichever small group was on it. Yeah? Okay.
We actually have a $1 million revolving.
Well, we did it, and I think it was a carryover from Opadot.
Yep.
And so, that's how that got, that's how that got on the table, because we actually were going to, well, we did. We passed it to send money over there to do the revolving loan. It just never got implemented.
Did Nancy write about that session we had? Because I did say some of the thing, saying things. I said, "I don't remember talking about these recruitment goals," but she did mention, well, the groups, individual breakout groups, people did say that in the groups, so.
Okay. Oh, the breakout groups, right. Right, got it. Thank you, sir.
If I can say one more thing, too, because the tax cap comes up all the time in the city. And so, now that we, we're talking for the people that are listening, for the people that are here, it's based off of lower ground, correct me if I'm wrong, Adlerum taxes. So, it's property taxes. So, it's not business taxes that are brought in. So, if the tax cap was lifted today, it's roughly, we calculated somewhere around $500,000 with our current property tax base. So, my question to the public is, and these are the discussions we need to have, if we had $500,000 more dollars in the budget, what do you want us to do with it? Police? Parks? And these are the, this will help us start to build the trust when they can have, and I have already started asking these questions, and when, in the last election, when I was knocking doors, public safety was the number-one thing we talked about.
And Bill, one thing I would recommend if you go down that path, when I do town halls, inviting that kind of discussion, the first thing I always do is have your finance director explain where the dollars are currently being spent, for what benefit? Because if we just say, "Well, we've got a wish list with $100,000," people are not fully informed about either what's currently being done with dollars, or people don't understand general fund, and they think all these dollars can be going to discretionary initiatives. And so, if you choose to do that, make sure that you do an informational session along with the questions.
Thanks a lot, communication.
Ms. Nancy, thank you so much for doing that. We say it all the time, and we talk about collaboration, and we talk about all of the things that we want to do. I mean, I'm looking at all of this, and I guess sometimes I could be a stickler, because I said, and all of the boards I sit on, we don't have time to waste right now. We are the walking billboard for whatever we represent. We have to make ourselves educated. So, I heard the word "trust" come up again. You know, how can we as a whole?
How can we what?
How can we as a whole develop new innovative ways so that people can trust? This council?
Well, let me just give you a short example.
Yeah, short is fine.
Okay? And then build on it from there. A few years back, I was doing strategic planning with the city, and they actually did their strategic planning with their Board of Education.
Right. We did.
Okay? And when they did that, you can imagine the word that got out to the public as a result. So, when you start taking a look at some of the things, like on housing, that's going to be identified with the county, the organizations, okay? You need to be doing some joint efforts and some joint brainstorming about what you can possibly do, rather than the county on their own, the city on their own, benefactors in the community on their own. And is it difficult? Absolutely. Look at your calendar. Think about getting all of those organizations together all at once.
It's a trip.
Without doing that, though, you miss a large number of the public, and it's like the game of telephone. The county does a meeting, the city does a meeting, Saginaw Future does a meeting, Chamber of Commerce does a meeting. Four different outcomes will be related to the public, and you heard the same words, but you didn't hear them with the same intent. So, you got to be in the same room together more than once.
We needed to hear that.
Thank you.
For council and Nancy, we are redevelopment-ready community, and I think we were one of the first in the state to be certified. So, we're required annually to have a joint meetings with various boards, and we work very hard to do that. So, part of this will be the other groups engaging with us, too, because it's a struggle to get those other organizations to come to that meeting, even Yolanda's nodding because she's our RRC coordinator. But that's been a struggle in the past, too, so hopefully, we can get more of a teamwork to get the word out. And over and over again, when we went through this, Vicky and Nancy and I, the communication part was very significant, and I think that goes to some of the things that she's saying, is to help develop those talking points for council members so that you all have them. So, when you see, "Why are we spending $16 million on a water tower that could have gone to roads?" So, we can all say the same thing, that's not the same bucket of money, and it's not the same grant money, so that people can understand that. So, I like that concept, but we may, and as we go through this process, we may need another planning session just dedicated to working through these goals, you know, other than just at a council meeting. So, I think that's going to be part of one of the next steps, and even, there may be some that come up, even if we don't have all of those plans done. I really like this recommendation here about the talking points for the tax cap, because I know you all get questions, we all get questions. We need to make sure we're communicating the same talking points to the public about that and what it's going to do for the city and what impact it has and what you may want to see. And everybody has different goals. I know Councilman Osteash mentioned public safety. Councilwoman Hammond just mentioned rental inspections, which could be something that could be funded through additional money, too. How do you leverage those dollars and do more than one thing? So, I think a lot, there's going to be a lot of planning that goes into it, you know, some of the things we have done, and maybe we look to increase some of these things. If the subgroup had 200,000 in Brownfield, what if we have more than that? Or do we need to have, work with the Brownfield authority, the city Brownfield authority to faster develop those loan guidelines and parameters and things like that? Because I know that's something that they're working on. Maybe we should, as a council, give some suggestions as well.
Yeah. And then, I don't mean to throw more work at you, however, when you take a look at the issues that you identified, particularly the high-priority issues that you identified, you could probably have someone with the city taking a look at, are any of those issues causal agents for other issues? Because some of the issues that you have identified are really symptoms of other issues. So, if you get to those causal agents and identify those, okay, then you may, it'll be a longer-term effort usually, because they're more complicated. But if you're able to eliminate those causal agents, some of those other symptoms will go away.
Any other questions?
No. Just one real quick for Tim. You mentioned that we might need like another planning session. Would a committee of the whole work in that, because in that case, we can meet as a body open, and no decisions are made, but it's a working session, basically. We did it with cannabis.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think, so last I heard, the county is holding a session tomorrow talking about housing. Are we sending representatives to that?
I was planning to go.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions? Once again, thank you, Ms. Nancy.
Thank you.
Job well done.
Thank you so much, and thanks to all of you. And by the way, give a shout-out to Vicky.
Yes.
Hey, Vicky.
She has been an organizational lifeline.
Ooh, babe.
You are amazing.
That was a long session, but hopefully, we'll make sure you get all the additional items that you need and can read through that, and we'll start working on the next steps. That's all I have.
Any other questions? The city manager?
City manager, yes.
Matt, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Counselor, we still.
Thank you so much. Yes. I'd like to know, on several occasions, Chief Ruth has been here to answer some questions in regards to different complaints and different questions from the citizens that myself and maybe other people have brought up. And then time passed, I think a couple of years ago, questions were brought up in regards to Michigan State Police, and myself and maybe some other council members had asked for Michigan State Police. They did come, and I've had a relationship. Those persons have changed now. I'd like to see if we can have them come in, maybe talk with us again. You know, I think the last time they were here was almost two years ago. Need some questions answered again. I know they don't have their community liaison person anymore. And then I think some of the citizens in Saginaw need to know who these persons are, you know, and, you know, just give us a feel on, you know, what they're doing, what they plan on doing, you know, what's going on with them in the city of Saginaw. You know, I'd like to know.
Yeah. We can invite them. They have done some smaller group meetings since that last time they were at council. They've met with a couple of council members.
Yeah, those guys are gone.
Yeah, they're having a bigger turnover. I'm not sure if they have a command staff that's sat right now at the Tri-City post or not, but we'll ask them. I think it's probably, they're probably all interim right now. But I will say that the mayor and I both have talked to the colonel and lieutenant colonel about various issues, and they are dedicating more community services time from their office, from their community service headquarters or coordinator in Lansing. They don't, might not have that one here, but they're starting to go to events. I don't know if they were, they were at the Community Resource Fair, because they did reach out about what events should they start attending, and they did make that commitment to attend more. So, yeah, we'll reach out to them.
Okay. And also, in my three minutes, I mentioned different things going on in the city, and then Councilman Ball's also kind of followed up some. So, I'm not going to say what the likelihood is, but there needs to be some consideration for our young people. There just needs to be some consideration for them to be able to have someplace, there's not many places for them to go and to have some fun and to do something. It's been over 90-degree weather, and like I said, we need to put our heads together, and we need to think outside of the box. All of our young people are not my age. I don't expect them to think like I think, or a lot of us think, and we probably need to meet and come up with something, and maybe we are not meeting or asking the right questions or going about it. I don't know if that's overtime or whatever, instead of sitting back waiting on these, I don't know what you want to call it. I'm not going to say freak nights. They're not all freak nights, but they're just 90, almost 100-degree, feel like 100-degree weather, and young people want to have something to do. We need to give them avenues of something to do. All of our young people don't want to go and. All of our young people don't want to go and volunteer. And, you know, we just have to come up with something or help guide them into doing something. Youth centers at 30, 30, 35-years-old, the youth centers are not a place our young people are getting ready to go. It just is not going to happen. Beg your pardon? Oh, okay. Yeah, that, that's not going to happen. Youth centers are not for their age, you know. Most youth centers cut off at like 18, 19-years-old. That's all I have to say.
We done?
I am, right now. Thank you. We want them to come, we want them to come, we want them to be viable, you know, in the city of Saginaw. We want them to come back and we want them to have something to do.
I, I sometimes wonder, is it the body or is it us and our wanting? Things have changed a lot in the city. And I'm not just saying it because I've been a part of it. I'm saying if we look around, there's new stuff going up every day. When we got those offer dollars, we hollered and screamed about, we gonna do this for the youth, we gonna do that for the youth. I, I, I think that a lot of times what we've got to do is, and Councilwoman Sylvia has said it, we got to talk to them. It's like you got adults making decisions for young people and some of the decisions that we're making are not conducive to what they want to do. So, now what do we do? Again, we are a work in progress. We gonna make mistakes. I don't think nobody up here is perfect. And those that want to do the got you moment all the time, that's on you. If you're really serious about doing what we got to do, we just got to buckle down. And we got to tell the story. Saginaw has a lot to offer. I mean, this Saturday was running over with stuff. It was running June tea from Friday all the way till Sunday. Stuff was going on. So, I don't know, Councilwoman Sylvia, we're going to have to get together and do some brainstorming and see if we can come up with some avenues where we can reach out and we can touch. Because you, you're not going to get some of these kids, period. You, we just not going to get them. Ain't no need for us pregnant because we not. But if we can just save one, then that's better than not trying at all. Yes, sir?
I'd just like to say, far as when it comes to youth, I've talked to the youth and worked with them. And we do have some, you know, a lot of organizations in our community that are targeting different age groups. And Mayor, you're right, when we, when we start making decisions for our youth, you know, I ask these kids what they want all the time. And when you start looking at the ages of 13 and below, you know, we need to have activities for them as well. When you start looking at 14 and above, these children, these youth want to work. They want to work. They want to make money, they want to provide for themselves. When you start having a population between like 18 to 25, you know, there's a, there's a lot of different factors when it comes to that, you know, as well with that age group because they are grown. So, they have a lot of choices they can make independently. But, I believe that, I believe that, like Mayor said, we have to come, come together to have a comprehensive plan for our, for our community as well. So that when a kid comes out of high school, he'll have something to look forward to in this city, opposed to having to leave and go other places. And so, we have to come, we have to be all on the same page from our education department, from our education to our workforce, you know, and those, and those things together. So, I think that there are efforts in our community that's trying to target those populations of people. And I think we have to, like I said, go back to educating ourselves and seeing what those serves, resources is for them and make sure they get those, get those sources, resources to them. And so, I think that's what's more important, that's what's important right now. And then, it's, it's a lot to do out here. You know, it's a lot to do. But, at the same time, there's a lot of factors when you're talking about the 18 to, you know, after 18, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of factors on, you know, far as any delays in their life or anything that they're not doing. So, there are some, there are some people that's out here. I, I, I met three young men that are 19-years-old out of Saginaw Covenant Academy and I'm able to work with, and some great positive young men, and they're looking to do things positive. And so, we have people that's in place, working with these people. So, we just have to make sure we reach out and, and, and call around. Hey, I got some youth out here, I got somebody, do, do you need some work? You got lawn work. We had a few guys now recently, over the past couple of weeks, doing yard work. Them young guys are doing yard work, helping senior citizens out. I had a house last week where, you know, they were like 80-years-old residents. And so, we helped with the backyard, the trees, you know, they can't get out there and cut trees no more. And so, there's a lot to do in our community and there's a lot that, there's a lot to do. And I think we need to focus on those solutions instead of focus on the, like Mayor say, I got you moments, you know? So, that's all I have, man.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Madam Clerk? The consent agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any exceptions? Yes.
I have exceptions to number five and number seven.
Five and seven, is there any more? For the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, number five.
Item number five is to approve the amendments to the fiscal year 2025 approved budget to recognize changes that have occurred during the June period. That was Councilmember Hammond. So, hi.
Hello.
And I thank you to Tim for answering the questions that I had. It was a little bit overwhelming, this particular agenda with the number of items we had, the number of changes we had. But, I had a question, sort of a follow-up that I introduced under one of the DDA. Basically, I was just really unfamiliar with the history of the Seals Island DDA fund. So, it, it, Tim mentioned in our email that there was a project that was going to happen and then it didn't happen. I might be mischaracterizing that, but I, I just wanted to know about what that was about.
Okay, so the Seals Island DDA fund is one of our special revenue funds from a long time ago. We did tax capture for a specific project. I think it might have been Baker Perkins or Seals Island itself. It did not go through. So, part of our GASB rules and accounting rules that we could sweep the cash account and take it to the general fund. Now, we settled on the DDA, the TIFAs and LDFAs years ago. This is just a cleanup of a fund that has not been active for some time. And so, that's what we're doing with this adjustment.
How long has it been inactive for?
Oh, it's been years. I mean, I think it's like back in maybe 13, 15? 15 to 20 years. So, this is just literally cleaning up old accounts and making sure that they go, the funds that are there, if they're there, goes to the right place.
Okay. And this is going back to the general fund?
Yes. It's allowable, yeah.
Thank you. I will motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number seven is to approve the purchase with Flock Group Incorporated for $28,800 for fiscal year 26 and pending budget approval, $28,800 annually for fiscal year 27 through fiscal year 30 for a flock safety intersection surveillance system for the police department. Hello. So, for this, I, so I read the 20-page agreement. And first I had questions because I know we just voted, voted on another flock agreement with, and it was almost word for word, the same memo on April 21st. So, can you describe to me the difference between what we voted on then and what we're voting on now and why there are two separate agreements or payments?
It's not a separate agreement, it's just additional purchases. So, this is actually the third purchase of flock equipment. I think it's the third one. Each one was on a different order, basically. And their coordinating locations is, I think is the reason behind that. So, all of these are, are grant-funded purchases. So, this is, I think this will exhaust those technology grant funds. So, this should be the last purchase coming. I would imagine, I don't, we haven't used a general fund dollars on this and I don't think we'll, unless those recommendations come from council, we aren't planning to.
Okay. So, this is the same agreement that exists for all of those purchases?
Yeah. It's the same approved agreement, it's just a different order each time.
Okay. And I appreciated the, I appreciated the attachment of the contract. I appreciated the emphasis on customer-owned data. I just wanted to fill some gaps in my understanding on this particular contract as I read it. It was a lot, so again, I appreciate it. I wanted to make sure, so when the, the cameras are purchased, they're purchased from flock? Or are they, are they rented from flock?
I think they're leased.
They're leased.
Yeah, so there is a, and, you know, they have an, we have an out clause. I don't know if they have an out clause in the contract. I know we do. So, if it ever came to a point where we can't pay that lease, then they would just take the cameras back.
Okay. Okay, so, because the question that I had was, because I know these cameras are going up in multiple locations. And so, there are significant protections on this data that comes as customer data. But, I wanted to ensure that the cameras that are actually going up, because it distinguishes between flock hardware and customer data, that the hardware that we actually have, so sorry, or that the data that we're collecting from all of these cameras that we're installing is protected under the customer data portion.
Yeah, yeah. From my read of the contract and the city attorney can confirm, but I think all the data is customer data.
Okay.
Because it's, it's data that's coming into us. The equipment, it could, it's flock equipment that we lease, but the data is customer data.
Okay. So, this agreement goes through the end of fiscal year 28, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe so.
I think the earlier one was 27, this one's, I believe it's 28.
Oh, you mean the order? The lease?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Whatever.
And that was exactly the question I was going to ask was, was the lease for the equipment, is, does that come up at the same time period and then it reverts to flock property, essentially?
I think there's probably an extension in each order. If you want to, you know, the way the technology works though, at the end of that lease period, there may be something.
They might not exist.
Yeah. And there may be something that's better and new and cheaper.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have found that out with a lot of the camera technology. This is different from our regular cameras, but at one time, probably 10-years ago or more, we were spending a couple thousand dollars on cameras, just regular cameras. And now, we get better cameras for $200. So, hopefully, the technology changes and we'll have something new at the end.
So, and I, I read the agreement and the data was, had more, more protection to it than I was, than I was, than I saw in some earlier agreements from flock that I was really concerned about. However, I will say that I'm, I still have a very fundamental concern with even the anonymized data that is being fed back into the flock system for their use and their, their, you know, whatever they want, they can do with it. I, I have, I know that it's anonymized, but I still have issues with it because I believe that the way you're piecing together and putting together data nowadays, it is still really easy to get specific information from bulk anonymized data. So, I, I understand that, I understand that, that what, what they're trying to do with it and what they say they're trying to do with it. Personally, I don't trust it. That is my opinion, but from what I'm, I, I don't, I don't like it. I also have an issue with the disclosure of footage portion on 5.3, where, subject to enduring a retention period, flock may access, use, preserve, and/or disclose the footage to law enforcement authorities, government officials, and/or third parties if legally required to do so, or if flock has a good faith belief that such access, use, preservation, or disclosure is reasonably necessary to comply with the legal process, enforce this agreement, or detect, prevent, or otherwise address security, privacy, fraud, or technical issues, or emergency situations. And the, the situation that I see arising out of there is obviously, we're surveilling people, there's, there's a lot of data and there's a lot of crime. And if you have essentially an order from the federal, a federal entity to say, hey, I'm going to grab this data, that, and hey, I know flock has it, I'm going to go after it. You have the same issues with Apple and Google. But, I, I still think it's, it's something that I particularly don't, I, I see it as a really potential big breach considering some of the recent actions of, of some of our federal agencies that would have the power to do this. So, I'm just expressing my concerns with it. I overall think that the, the data and the customer data regulations around that are pretty tight, but I still have those very deep concerns. So, with that, I'll, I'll motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Any more questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Madam Clerk.
Roll call vote?
I'm sorry.
I said nay, so.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Excuse me. What just happened? I'm sorry.
We're doing a roll call vote. We're doing a roll call vote because she voted nay.
Oh, okay, 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 yes.
Councilmember Seals.
Aye.
Councilmember Balls.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Yay.
Councilmember Ostache.
Yes.
Councilmember Braddock.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Nay.
And Mayor Moore.
Yes.
You have eight yes and one nay. That motion is approved. Takes us to board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any reports of any activities or any groups that are city-related? Okay. Madam Clerk.
I'm to appointment of board, board commission and committee members.
I need a motion to approve one through four, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Takes us to ordinance introduction. We have one. It's a new ordinance to add section 12.044 titled Saginaw Commission on the Unhoused to chapter 12 of title one Administrative Code of the City of Saginaw Code of Ordinances O-204.
I need a motion given to deuce.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Can we have discussion on this, right?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I was going to reference the public comments made about this ordinance. And I, I agree with the comments made about the purpose and responsibilities as laid out, or rather, the duties and purposes mostly being duplicative. So, when I first engaged with, on this commission, as we all have talked about it multiple times, I called some folks, some folks I knew who were with CHAP about this particular organization. I called Michigan Coalition to End Homelessness and asked for some recommendations and feedback on both the membership and the purposes. So, I submitted those recommendations to city staff. And some of those recommendations were put into the final version and some of them weren't. And the duties in this ordinance, under the duties and purposes section, is very different from what my initial recommendations were. So, I'm proposing an amendment to bring back the final language back to match both what we heard from the public today, from our partner organizations, and to the initial intent of the recommendations. So, we can go, we can get more into the weeds on that. Or, if, if everybody seems amenable, I can just introduce the amendment and we can open that discussion.
I'm going to say this. For me, I'm going to vote nay. Because there is an instrument already working. And the size of the board is 13 is too many. We don't have 13 boards, 13-member boards. We've got, all we've got committees that we can't even make quotas because we can't get people to fill on the seats. You're talking 13, you're talking seven people. Let's be honest. We, we are, I know I join sometimes and I can't always make meetings. So, on this one, if not broke, I'm not trying to fix it. Councilwoman Sylvia.
Okay. My, what, what my opinion, or where I feel, or whatever you want to call it, is why was it changed from what originally was discussed? That's the only thing I want to know, is why was it changed from what Councilwoman Hammond, the original, what she asked for it to be? That's all I want to know. Why was it changed? Or why wasn't she consulted? Or why? Why was it changed, or why wasn't she consulted, or why wasn't someone consulted in changing the verbiage? Because I think that would've been the, unless I'm wrong, somebody can correct me, I don't think I'm wrong, why wasn't she contacted before that was done? Because when somebody says, someone make a motion, or says, "Hey, this is, this is how this is to be read," or written, that's how it should be written. Not change it and say, "Well, I'm gonna just take this out," or "Add this in," who would be the wiser, and I'm not thinking someone did that intentionally, I hope not, but I think that that should've been done correctly.
Respond to that and let the city attorney comment too. That, the motion didn't say to include those items. The motion that was made at council directed the, I don't remember if it directed the city attorney?
Staff.
Staff, to draft an ordinance. It didn't say draft an ordinance with these items, so actually, we did, and we did get input from Councilwoman Hammond. We were already pretty far along in the process of drafting that, as, which was the directive through the motion. So it, it, it did comply with the motion. I think if you look at it, and I'll defer to the city attorney, but I think the intent is still the same.
I would agree.
So what happened? That's all I wanna know. So, 'cause it, so is Councilwoman, is incorrect? Let's go on and vote.
The motion did not say direct city staff to work with one council member.
Okay, let's go, let's get to going.
Councilwoman Seals.
Yes. Councilwoman Hammond, she did email us today, and she did provide us with some great information on, on the definition of the critical difference between the language of what the commission is about and its purpose, and I agree with that information she did send us. And it says that in its current format, the outward-facing nature of the commission is focused on more, on evaluating the outside entities and duplicating work already done by nonprofit partners, rather than evaluating on internal procedures and developing city, developing city policies that would help to trust, rather than impeding upon the work done by our regional partners. So I agree with that information, which means I also agree with what the mayor says, and I believe that Councilwoman Hammond agrees with me, that we shouldn't reinvent the will that's already being done by CCHAP, and the work that those ladies are talked about today that's already being done in our community. So I also be voting no, that it's already being done, and we should partnership with them, and continue the work, and build upon what's already been, been done for over twenty-five years in our community. So we should make that stronger and better.
I agree with that, may. I, I will say that there wasn't, like, any malice or ill will. We, we did take several of Ms. Hammond's recommendations and incorporated them into the draft. Upon reviewing her recommendations, staff had felt that the intent and purpose she had outlined substantially mirrored the language that we had already included in the draft. So we, we thought the purposes that both of us outlined were very, very similar, and that's, we, we didn't feel it needed to have any changes, because we thought it reflected her intent.
Councilwoman Wiggins, please.
I guess, I just want to, I guess, reiterate, we don't want to duplicate or repeat the services that are already in existence, I think that's obvious, but I also think that, you know, just sitting at the table and, and finding the holes, if there are holes, and trying to make that a better process with us involved and the city involved, I think that's what we're looking to do. So if there is a way that we can maybe revisit, revise, you know, come back to this, and, and fill in the holes without repeating what CCHAP's already doing.
Yes, Council. Yes, Council. Pardon me?
She has already spoke once, you have to go through ones on everyone first.
I thought y'all told me side to side.
Who is she?
Side to side.
You already spoke once.
That would be Councilwoman Sylvia, not she, 'cause I didn't know who she was.
Yes, you were the one who had your hand up.
Okay, come on, let's get it right.
Councilman.
I didn't know who she was.
Braddock.
Okay.
All right, I would just like to speak on the matter far as, with the, far as the committee, I think there needs to be more communication within far as with CCHAP and all these organizations. I believe that, like you said, start, we, we, we have a lot of people doing the work on, on that issue, and I would say far as homelessness. I think there's some communication need to be had within the, actually, these, the different organizations and ourselves, and so to see what those holes are before we get to start trying to form a committee or commission may not be necessary at this time, I believe. And only reason why I say that, because there are a lot of efforts out here when it comes to homelessness, and I think that we, we can, we can assist and help with a lot of these issues, and I don't think we have to take the forefront on all the issues that are out there when we already have people on the forefront that's out there. There's people that's on the front line, so let's strengthen it and help those people on the front line. Now, if there's an emergency or some type of critical need, then I think that's when the city, the city councils should come together and maybe form something, but right now, we are dealing with the common factors of homelessness, and those common factors will go, all homelessness that has been existing for years, it's always gonna have homelessness in, in every city. And so I think that we have to make sure we, like I say, educate ourselves and be smart about how we approach this issue, instead of recreating and reinventing these wheels. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, Mike, I'm side, Councilman Board.
I'd like to call for the vote, ma'am.
Thank you.
Call for the votes on table. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, we're calling for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia.
No.
Councilmember Seals.
Yes.
Councilmember Balls.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
I just wanna make sure I'm reading right, so this is number one here, where we're adding a new ordinance?
We're voting on the adopt, or the introduction, excuse me.
We're voting to call a question.
We're voting to call a question.
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache.
Yes.
Councilmember Braddock.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
No.
You said no?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
You have six yes and three no, that motion is approved, so you have to just conduct your vote on the ordinance introduction.
Okay, so, say that again, please.
It is, to add section 12.044, titled Saginaw Commission on the Unhoused, to chapter 12 of title one, Administrative Code of the City of Saginaw, Code of Ordinances, O-204.
Okay.
Just take your vote.
Does everybody understand what the motion is?
No.
Yes.
See, I believe, it, it's, it's the original motion that was on the table. I was only forward, I was...
I'm so serious, 'cause let me explain why I don't understand, seriously. So, seriously, there was a motion, then Councilwoman Hammond said something about to do something with the motion, so what are we actually voting on?
You're voting on introducing the ordinance as it was, or originally included in the pack?
And not messing with the motion, okay. I'm so serious, I'm just...
Did I understand right? What else? All right.
Okay, it's called for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia.
No.
Councilmember Seals.
No.
Councilmember Balls.
No.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
No.
Councilmember Ostache.
Nay.
Councilmember Braddock.
No.
Councilmember Wiggins?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Council, um, excuse me, Mayor Moore?
No.
You have one yes and eight no, that motion is denied. On to ordinance adoption, we have one, it's to amend section 92.30, adopted fire code amendments of chapter 92, fire protection and public safety of title nine, general regulations of the City of Saginaw, Code of Ordinances, O-204.
I need a motion to adopt. Second.
I'm sorry, who had a motion?
Second.
Thank you.
We have any questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
On to resolutions, our first is objecting to the transfer of tax-reverted properties from Saginaw County.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Support?
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? All those, yes.
Don't we, don't we normally give these people these properties, but I don't understand what's going on, why they're not giving them now?
Hello, Councilman Balls, so we're at the very first step, so houses went into tax foreclosure back in, like, April, March time. At this point, the local municipalities have the option to purchase any of the properties, or either back taxes, any of the other liens, otherwise, if we object, they'll all go out to bid, so, an auction.
So we've given them an opportunity to get their property back?
Yep, and then they'll come back to us again in the fall, and we would either get them for free or object, and they go back to the land bank.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second resolution is authorizing sponsors of specified community events to use amplifying equipment.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to miscellaneous business.
Is there any other miscellaneous motions before we go into closed session?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Aye. I think you all may have gotten, do I say that, or do I just make the motion?
Just make the motion.
Okay, I'll just make the motion. Motion to approve the issuance of a letter to the elected officials and judges of the Saginaw County Courts, asking them to support establishing a more balanced, restorative, and accountable juvenile justice process.
Our support.
Second.
It's been moved and supported, it's been moved and supported, any discussion? Yes.
How did this come about?
How did it come about?
We, actually, it's a series of meetings, so first, I think initially, we, the police chief and I, and deputy chief, and the victim services unit met with Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia and Councilwoman Braddock, and I think that was our initial meeting. Second meeting, we met with, we included the county prosecutor and chief deputy prosecutor, and then our next meeting, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was the next meeting where we had former offenders, I might've missed one meeting in there, but then out of that process, and Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia, I think, did the first draft of the letter, and we assisted with it, I think Vicki helped her with the letter, and we brought it back, and through discussions, we wanted to introduce it to the rest of council.
Also, we, I also started meeting with victim services, and I invited Councilwoman Sylvia to come along, and after, and after our discussions, we started seeing some holes and some, some, and some process in, in our community far as how, how, how can I say this, how some juvenile delinquents, the process of the juvenile delinquents on returning back to the streets, you know, a lot of, we see a lot of youth that, that get in trouble, getting involved in violent crimes, that getting caused in violent crimes, and we just trying to come up with a, what we came up with is, we came up with a, a letter that really is trying to build a collaboration between the judges, the lawyers, the police department, communities, and the families. So that way, we can ensure that the, that, that once someone is, once, once a youth is, is, is troubled, or at risk, or involved in some gun violence, that we can take a, a comprehensive hold on them, you know, and ensure that we can try to have the best outcome for them as possible. And we don't wanna just lock all our, lock all our children up, but we also wanna keep our safe, our streets safe, and our communities safe. And so we know, we know that there's a lot of challenges in the families and the homes when it comes to dealing with, with troubled youth and violent youth, we know guns is an issue in our community, and so after those meetings, we were just trying to come up with some, see what those needs, and see how we can help our community fight against gun violence. And so this letter is what we came up with initially, right now, the letter wasn't just my idea, it was a group effort of the idea, and so we was looking for, we looking at additional letters to this to strengthen, strengthen, strengthen the letter, as it move forward to, to where we're trying to send it, to the judges, and to elected officials, to, to, to put focus on our community and on, on our youth, and to ensure that we don't lose our children along this way. And those that can be helped, we wanna be able to help them. And so that's what this letter comes, come out with, and, go ahead.
Let me say this in a nut, let me kinda put it in a nut nutshell. We've heard, and I know probably almost everyone in this room has heard, we no longer want to see our police officers, our prosecutors, et cetera, go through and do their jobs, their jobs, and, and it is what it is, our seventeen and under, commit murder, and get out in two or three years and commit another murder, bottom line. That's, that's really where this came from, it's where a lot of this came from. And there's other pieces to it, and we can't break down every little piece, but this is the biggest pieces. You know, they commit a murder at sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, and they get out, and they kill someone else's son or daughter, after all of the work that our police officers and our system has, you know, done, and everything, and this is what they do, and our mothers, and our children, and our fathers, were crying. And we, we can't, we can't do it, we love them, we, we're gonna continue to love them, but we can't put our babies at risk, we can't continue to do that. We can't continue to let our mothers keep crying, so this is where this came from. And this is going through to council, to sign, for each one of us to sign?
Yes, Councils, Councilwoman Seals.
Was, was there any communication to the judges and the other?
You gotta talk loud.
Was, sorry, was there any communications made to the judges and other people, elected officials that you're sending this to, prior to these letters going out?
The judges already know, we had, um...
Before you?
I'm sorry, we had prosecutors at the table with us, we had chief of police at the table with us, when we were doing this and discussing this.
So this would be the first time the judges would see these meetings?
No, we haven't talked to the judges or elected officials, this letter, this is the first communication to them, and so these are some ideas, and we actually, we actually talked about, after the letter sent, sent out, the, to see what some type of... we actually talked about after the letter sent out, the two, see what type of follow-up, maybe, to see what their concerns, if maybe we can get some follow-up, okay, we can't make them, but, maybe we could get some follow-up from the elected officials and the judges on how this is. And so, what we're asking for with this letter is just to be represented all as a city saying that this is our concern in our city, you know, and we asking, we asking the city council to come forward with us, present this to y'all, to come forward with us, so we can make that communication with them.
I would add too that, if we go back, if you recall, and I can't remember when we had the most appearances, but there were, I think it was last fall, probably, early September, August, September, when parents of murdered children were coming to our council meetings, every meeting, expressing concerns, and we did sit down with them, and we did have the prosecutor at that meeting too, and that's where we first started talking through, when they would ask us, well, why can't, who sets the bonds, who requires, you know, there's certain checklist when you do a juvenile arrest now that you have to do, and they said, who was setting those and who's requiring them, and they asked for action, as Councilwoman Mar Sylvia did say, hey, can you communicate as the city that there could be changes that could be made, and it's not, I don't think that the intent, and those two could comment more, but the intent isn't necessarily to tell, you know, how the judges or other electeds do this, but, could you work with us and ensure that we're doing everything we can to keep the city safe? And, a big point of focus in our discussion too, wasn't just, oh, you need to have longer probation periods or longer sentences, it was also, what can you set up when the youth come out to help get them back into their role in society?
I'd like to piggyback on that, because we, and that's another thing too, we have organizations like Victorious Community Development, we have organizations like Help, we have Women of Colors, and so, we do have these organizations that are working with the juvenile delinquents, and so, if we can, if we can have a, be very strategic on how we handle our youth and be all on the same page, you know, and I think that's what it was trying to get us all on the same page, so that way, when we face them with their youth, you know, we are all on the same page with their youth, helping them get out their situation, and also, with this, with this letter, it also allows those organizations to be helpful and to be, to help get, you know, to help get into the lives of those youth, you know, and so, if they going in and out the system, we can't get our hands, we can't get our hands on, you know, and so, just right here, it's like, okay, if a child gets in trouble and he has gun violence, and just say he shoots the gun off and doesn't hurt anybody, all right, nobody get killed, but he get detained, and so, what do we do with that child now? And so, that's where we have organizations here that are like Help, Victorious Community Development, and a couple of others, that are targeting these youth and trying to talk to these youth and get them out of their trouble, and I believe that this letter and what we're trying to communicate helps that, helps with the other organizations as well, not just with the city council, but also help those organizations be able to get into those kids' lives.
Councilmember Balls, I got to go here.
Thank you, man. I like this letter, I mean, because we just asking the judges and other people if they would consider, you know, say, would you respectfully request the court to consider these recommendations, and I think they're fine recommendations, because, you know, when we find out what type of trauma the kid is going through or have been through, you don't know if he have a parent at home, or he's coming from a single parent home, or even parents at all, and a lot of times, they don't have any life skills, they don't have any conflict resolution or anything like that, and that's one of the reasons why, and you got on their mentorship. I've been mentoring for thirty-something years, and it's only because I know that sometimes these kids got an adult in their lives, and they show that they care about them, then normally they can change, and I've seen it happen many times, but we got to have somebody in their life to show that they care about them and to get down to some of the basic needs of the child or something like that, you know, then that help, normally help the kid out so he can, you know, be a productive member of society. So I'm going to support this letter, and I would like to call for the vote.
Wait, can we call for the vote, we have to sign it?
Pardon me, we voting to call for the vote, which means, I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia? Councilmember Seals? This is on the call the question.
We calling for the question. So we can vote on the original motion.
This is on the call for the vote?
Right.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Oystash?
No.
Councilmember Braddock?
No.
Councilmember Wiggins?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
You have three yes and six no, that motion is denied, so you're still under discussion on the motion.
Any more discussion? Y'all know we went to this, we not?
Do.
Yes.
All I want to say is, everything, because I don't want to reiterate what everybody has said, but, I support this. Working with Help, we've had, I've actually worked with a kid that was a shooter, sixteen years old, right, trying to find a different path, but as long as we can support something like this, that they know that are repercussions. But also, when I spoke with mothers of murdered children and talked to the moms who have lost kids to gun violence, these were the things that they talked about, and it's at the local level, the prosecuting level, I've talked to the prosecuting attorney, you have issues with PR bonds, and then at the state level, mothers of murdered children, they even talked from that perspective, where we need to reach out to our legislators and say, hey, we've got problems in the system. But like you said, Councilwoman Braddock, then having organizations, when they come out, if they are incarcerated, then how do we move them over into jobs or training? And that, you have organizations like Come Out, Stay Out. So I can support this, and I'm glad, I applaud you for putting it together.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I think it fits the vision, so, I think it fits our vision, so we should vote for this.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just want to know, so, my specific concerns are about the specific recommendations, and you're talking about the necessity for potentially changes in state law, also, the issues with, which I do think we have a duty to comment on as a partner, if we have this problem, we need to be involved in every way we can, but, we're talking about state law, we're talking about county procedures and policies and potentially funding, and then we're sending this letter to a judge who makes sentencing decisions on a daily basis. The problem that I have with the way that this letter is composed currently is that we're issuing policy recommendations to the judge. The issue that I have with that is that if we want to be talking about policy recommendations and we're telling the judge that in one of these things is stronger bond evaluations, the issue that, the red flag that I have with that is, I don't want to be introducing something where we're saying, hey, we're not trying to be punitive, but here's a couple recommendations, one of which may be punitive, because these other things, we don't have any funding for. Does that make sense? So like, my concern is, we're putting forward policy recommendations that don't, may not have a funding mechanism, and these kinds of things, if they don't have a good mechanism, if they don't have a good process, they may not be done very well, they may not be followed through and have the intended outcome. So I just wanted to know what, where the discussion is involved with that, and is there a possibility of this being taken the wrong way? Because that's just my major concern, is, you know, if we're saying, hey, we had these discussions, this is the next step to continue discussion, I love that, but the language in this letter is what makes me nervous, because we're being very prescriptive when we may not have the structural funding to back that up.
Of course, there are some things that we cannot disclose, and I wouldn't dare. So, that may, and there, these are recommendations, and let me, let me remind you that we have prosecutors at the table, okay? And these are going to also lawmakers for a reason, because they set, they'll also be setting the tone. So these are recommendations, these are some things, and they may send this back and say, hey, we can do this, we can do that, we can't do this. That's what this is, so...
And also, also with the far as you talked about the funding, the police department has funded organizations for this exact, for this exact objective, and so, I think this would, and try to help strengthen those objectives, I think this is necessary. So the money and the funding is there for that, and the organizations are there for these different changes, I believe, so...
Any more discussion? No more discussion?
Yeah, I want to just say this, and I want to say it the right way, a lot of times, I put my foot in my mouth, but that's all right, I know how to take it out. This was done with the intent to help the citizens of Saginaw, to help way, way before the young mothers came to council, way before they came several times, because until you know a person that has been killed by a juvenile, and until you are up close and personal and know that a child has killed another child twice, it don't, it probably won't bother you the way it may bother me. And then, when you know police officers, and not just because I know and grew up with some, but I have family members that are police officers, and when you hear the stories that they work their ass off, excuse me, to, you know, go and find this out, and they, the forensics and this and that, all the things they've done to work, and people, oh, the police aren't doing this, they ain't doing their job, they've done their job, they've done more than their job, and to get a conviction, and then these, who, these kids do three or four years locked up for taking a life, who gives them the right to do that? It's not fair, it's not right, these are recommendations, and I just am just, I'm in awe of the conversation, and we, you have the right, because we are elected officials, you have the right to question, because that's your job, you were elected to do that. But what I'm hearing, I'm just, I'm kind of taken back, because I don't want to, I don't want to continue to see it until our young people know that there are consequences for picking up a gun and taking the life of some mother's child. You got to mess me with this one today, for real. Until you tell me, Monique, I agree, but maybe we need to do, maybe you should have said and instead of the, you got to mess me today, for real, for real, real. Thank you, I'm done. And I thirded.
So, we got another call for the vote on this floor, can we get, can we do?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I made the motion, she made the motion.
Okay, we're calling for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying, huh? Right?
Yes.
We're calling for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Let's call for the original vote. Original vote, again, Ms. Counsel, I mean, Madam Clerk here.
It will have to be Councilmember Sylvia, because I did not get it down that quick, she'll have to reread it.
Motion to approve the issuance of a letter to the elected officials and judges of the Saginaw County Courts asking them to support establishing a more balanced, restorative, and accountable juvenile justice process.
Okay, now that was a mouthful, and I'm sure everybody heard that, right?
Yes.
Calling for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving right along.
We're still under miscellaneous business.
We're still under miscellaneous business.
So you have your closed session motion there.
We need to go into closed session?
Motion to...
Motion to go into closed session.
It has to be read as stated on your script. It has to be read as stated on your script.
Okay, so, with that being said, roll call vote.
Nope, nobody made the motion as stated on the script.
I move to enter clo, oh, you want to do it? I'll do it. I move to enter closed session to discuss pending litigation in Little versus City of Saginaw per MCL fifteen point two six eight E.
Second.
It been moved to second, roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Seals?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Balls? Mayor Protem Garcia? Councilmember Oystash?
Yes.
Councilmember Braddock?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are entering closed session at nine sixteen.
I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second.
It been moved to second.
Yeah, we need the next one.
Return to regular session, right?
Okay, so, with that being said...
I move to approve legal recommendation as discussed in closed session regarding the Little pending litigation.
Second.
It been moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
You are still under miscellaneous business.
We have any more miscellaneous business that we need to take here. I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It been moved to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a good night.